Uh.
We had time out there to find the.
I, I.
Recording, your recording's on, uh, no work session order, one, number one item is the waterfront.
I sent you guys the email, I got back from the water works, if there are answers on, well, we can use that capital bar on time.
I think.
It's right here. I sent it back.
Okay.
And then notice another page with numbers on it.
What the hell, yes. That's what I get every month with the check for the garbage collection and recycling collection.
So you get ten, uh, two sixty four, uh, three one.
Yes. Yes, it goes in the general fund, it's your revenue that you should pay your bills.
Okay.
The primary risk isn't so they're holding a hundred ninety thousand?
Correct, and it's growing because of the.
Why do they hold?
Because it's their money to do the, the repairs.
If we have a catastrophic, a pipe failure, break, break something.
No, we don't own those lines, right?
Not in the city proper, all those ones we put in and.
They own them.
So that was, what year did we put them in? There was almost forty years old in eighty, so in two thousand and five or so, we put in.
What short over.
Eight, ten, and twelve inch lines because we had a house burned down, down there, so, and they were failing. The, the four inch lines that were there were insufficient for.
Our developments?
Well, anything, they, they were stretched to the limit for any use in the city of all, and failed.
And then the house burnt, most of the fire trucks set there and.
Well, that was, the fire department came out, didn't know that we weren't on twelve inch lines, and hooked up to them and sucked all the water out of them, and then they had to plan B it, so they had to bring out the county trucks with the tanks, and the house was lost due to a paddle fan, that burnout on the back porch, the whole house was lost.
Wind blew.
Yeah, yeah.
Fire blew through the house.
Yeah.
So they sent us a check for this amount, but then they also withhold it?
They withhold that line of the water bill that says all of them charges or something, a lot of those lines. They give us ours.
They give us this.
Yes.
And they hold X amount, which equals this.
Yes. Correct.
How long have they been holding this? Is this, is this just little bits going in?
They've been growing, we paid off that debt, so, two years now, yes.
About two years.
Yeah, it was, I think it was going fast.
And they hold that for the catastrophic, should they need that night, so it's, it's never really ours.
Correct. Never.
I, I thought they were holding from day one when they took over.
No.
No.
Not till we have to done.
Oh.
Okay, it wouldn't be available to run water lines in the community developments too at some point.
Yes, it is.
And we use, and we want, I don't know if it could be used for sewer.
It cannot. Cannot be used for sewer.
Not for sewer.
Not for sewer, but modern infrastructure.
So, when we say what, that can be used with this money, not the money, it can be used as with that money that they've been holding back. You can use it for that.
This is the one I did, I don't remember that.
That's what I'm saying, that's my question.
We can use to put new water.
We can use for new water.
Yes.
Okay.
Modern infrastructure, including with him.
Okay.
Okay, I think everybody's kept their questions answered on the water, next thing up is, uh, street cleaning, Logan?
I put, I put that one.
Oh, yeah.
It was my, my curiosity, uh, do we ever rent like a street sweeping machine? I, as we walk around the neighborhood, it's because of the great job you do with sanding, there's sand everywhere. So I didn't know if we'd ever rented a sweet, street sweeper and backed it all up, I don't know if we can hire a parking lot cleaning company to come in and do it once a year for us, it's just, it's, it's a mess, and then it also, all that water and sand goes down through the tiles that we have trouble with.
It does, yeah, uh, as far as I know, not in forty years have we ever done it, uh, it, I, I don't have equipment that I can put, uh.
I understand.
Sweeper on, uh.
Would that be something you would be willing to look into for us, to see what we can rent something for, or if, if it's a parking lot com- I know parking lots companies come in and.
Yeah.
Sweep parking lots, so maybe that's, they use some area, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I could, I could look into that and see what it would essentially, uh, cost the city to, to do that.
I don't know if United Rental has street sweeping machines or, I, so, I think they do.
Mr. Colbecky.
So.
Yeah, you might have to be a quality person, you got water freshener, you got your sweeper, you got.
Running out of, he's a parking lot company like Scott said, running out one time, cap for someone back there, we ran out of room or something.
Yeah, I'm not interested in just a sweep, a sweeper on the front.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not interested in that, I'm looking to get rid of it.
So you're looking for an actual street cleaning, not just street sweeping?
Street cleaning.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sand boning.
No, vac truck, the hole, okay.
Yes. Vac does, sorry if I was unclear.
No, I thought you just meant like, the, the sweeper, and I was like, I can't put it on the tractor, but, I mean.
You got a room? Push room?
I did it forty years.
You did? This is, thank you, Sherry.
It's, it's, it's every, 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 it's everywhere.
Yeah.
It must be nice to clean up.
It, it, it usually goes away, you know, real start of summer, it's finally all through the, the tiles and everything, but it sits there for.
Yeah, I, I do, it's motorcycle season now too, so it'd be.
Yeah, yeah.
Along that same line, uh, like, this, this reminded me of that, and I don't know if it could be kind of put into the same project budget or, or thought, but one of the things that I had seen on my mother in Los Angeles, she lives in a little rural town in Wisconsin of about five thousand people, so they've got a little bit bigger budget than we do, they've got some commercial there, but uh, in the fall, they have a big vac truck come along, and everybody breaks their leaves down into the curb and they come and suck them up, and often.
They do that down in, uh, Beaverdale or somewhere, I've seen.
That actually is a very interesting idea, considering the amount of stormwater, uh, infrastructure that we're going to be putting in, and a lot of people don't, I mean myself included, I don't rig the, the leaves.
We spend all this money putting in those storm drains and what, or the, the, the culverts and whatnot, and then they get plugged up with leaves, it's kind of a moot point, you know? If it won't drain, uh, it's just a thought, a thought.
Yeah, no, that's, that's an excellent thought, I hadn't thought of that.
You want to put a dollar or a, a amount of water in it?
Just get it down.
Get the price.
Well, they do it as part of their city, it's a city service, they have the trucks and everything, obviously we don't, so I don't know if there's even an option for us to rent something like.
Well, you gotta remember, we lost half the trees in town.
Yeah.
So, we, we got half the troubles we've had over the years.
Well, that's not necessarily true, because, just because we lost half the trees, we also lost half of the water torching that we had from those trees, which plays part of the stormwater, sorry.
That, that, and I think it's something like that would improve the, the lives of the people who live here.
Yeah.
Good idea, look at it.
I will.
Okay.
Check some stuff out?
We'll check it out. Next on the, I am, uh, listed as credit card limits.
As your husband does.
Does me too.
Yeah.
I'm full of this, this thing. Uh, it's been my understanding that there's some times where our company, our city credit card has been maxed out, and then if Sherry signs up for class, or Logan signs up for a class, they do it with their own credit cards and we end up writing the check, I think we should raise this one, what that has to be, I don't, I don't know if.
We have like a thousand now?
Five hundred.
Five hundred now?
Why don't we just get one for Logan and give him a five hundred dollar one, and she's got a five hundred, then you keep maintenance and city operations on a different deal?
Then you have two low dollar amount credit cards that are, are still doing, you, you're still kind of doing the same thing, it's.
I, I don't have a higher limit, it's. I don't have a problem with thirty-one, two, or three, I, it doesn't, I, I don't think five hundred dollar limit covers anything anymore.
How much does it cost to fuel up to that tractor?
That's all.
How much does it cost to fuel a tractor, about?
No, different account, no.
Different account.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a completely different account, yeah.
Last month, Logan had a check for three seventy-five for class.
And dues yearly dues.
Due in an extra car wash for the salt truck, they could not go through the car wash.
So the salt truck is too large to go through the actual car wash, so I have to manually wash it and, and everything else, sorry.
I got Easter candy, I spent four fifty on Easter candy, so.
Fuck them up to a thousand each?
I, I don't currently have one, and I, I honestly, she's the, she is the finance administrator.
I'm not certain.
Well, if you don't want them, you don't have to take them, but if you keep the two separate, won't that make it easier for the accountant as this guy's here and this guy's over here and.
I think for a thousand, you know, I mean, uh, used it, but at least in a situation that we act, you just got it.
So I don't necessarily think we need to have two, because if Logan needs one, he can sign up for work, he can run over here and whatever, I don't know if he needs something, I don't know, I don't know how often.
Where do you want to do?
Our primary goal is to have accounts at every place that we do, so that there's documentation of everything that we're getting, and we can follow that down the line, it's easier for Sherry, it's easier for me.
Yeah.
Uh, the credit card is that extra line of defense when an emergency situation happens, and we have to, she, she says, okay, we gotta go in here, and we gotta get this because we had this happen, or I say, we gotta go in here and get this because this happened, or, you know, so on and so forth.
Where, what was the primary process behind the limits that they are now?
Things were cheaper back in the day, five years ago, you can.
Just voted on it maybe three years ago, because it was Will Cox and Stevens still, they kept that at that back home.
At my work, every crew leader has a credit card for any kind of emergency, because to run back and then to get a card, to come back to get a card, you're prolonging, you're extending their time in the field, it's costing you money not to have that in hand, in pocket, I would say.
And I guess, my, my question to the thought process as to why the limit was set where it was, or is currently, uh, I would hope that wasn't because, you know, they wanted to like, stave off any potential abuse of the card, because, you know, I don't think we're dealing with that, with that kind of worry with these people, because they.
What would you guys think if we keep it as one for now, raise the credit limit to fifteen hundred bucks, and just see how it works? If, if, if there's some reason that we start coming into a lot of emergencies, that Logan is running back and forth to get it, then, then fine, I, I don't know, just because of the.
It's paid off every month?
Yeah, and that statement goes directly to Nick every month too, a couple of them with money statement, broke down what we did with it, so he's double checking it.
What's the? What's the worst, uh, worst time you've ever had, what's the most money you've gone over that?
We feed you over.
Well, there was a situation, but I can't recall what it was, and I think Bob was actually gonna give me his credit card at one point, and we found another option. We found another option, but I can't remember, it was gonna be like eight hundred dollars for something that.
I have to pay for my desk with my credit card, because it was eight hundred dollars.
So it was fifteen hundred enough?
I was gonna say, I would say twenty-five hundred, because even if, say in the future, the crime classes still, fifteen hundred versus twenty-five hundred, so.
Does, does like just cards that we have work the same as a private consumer card in that it, our credit rating is, is based on the percentage of the credit that was used?
I would assume it's to be unsecured.
I think what they look at is if you pay your bill on time, and you're late, and we have good.
Cities are completely different.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's what I wondered, because that's what affects your credit rating, if you go over fifty percent of your available credit consistently, they look at that bad.
It just shuts it off, it just shuts it off.
Yeah, it won't take long to process. Is it actually a credit card or is it a debit?
It's a business credit.
Credit, yeah, it's a business credit.
I may not agree with that one.
Okay.
I'm sure about one side.
What was the number?
The number you had, twenty-five hundred, okay, that's what we'll do, twenty-nine hundred bucks, that'll be up for a vote, uh, next, next, uh, meeting. Okay, uh, item number four, stormwater, one hundred and thirty-fourth and Denler Drive.
This is Mr. Andrews.
Andrews.
All right, so we've been having considerable problems over there that have stemmed from, you know, multiple potential sources, and I know Logan's been struggling trying to come up with, uh, fixes and cleaning and one, and mapping what's there existing and trying to determine what the materials are, what the sizing is, and apparently it's kind of a hodgepodge. It's a little bit all over the place as far as what it's made of, how many feet of whatever it is, some of it is iron, some of it is orange bird, some of it is, uh, a little bit more modern PVC, I know that there's, uh, root issues, I know there's collapse in the orange bird, I know there's rust, uh, corrosion in the cast iron, and we've been having all kinds of problems. Now, this wouldn't solve all of the problems, but I think it would solve much of the problems, and I know Bob and Scott, you've been having problems in your, in your yards. What I'm proposing is that we bypass some of these older systems with a new system that runs the entire length east to west on the north side of, uh, the properties on one hundred and thirty-fourth in the easement where the utility and drainage easement is, and dump it out, uh, in the four mile on either end with the use of, uh, a much larger, uh, going up from the four inch that's there now to a ten inch, uh, which should, uh, I'm hoping that that too, we can, we can work with the farmer and the tenant, uh, and give them a place to hook on to as well, and maybe cost share a little bit, but even if they don't, then I think, uh, I'm hoping that, that we'll be able to engineer this to where we no longer have the issues with any of the old aging system, we just bypass it altogether. And I know there's, there would be some issues where you've got some pumps and whatnot to hook directly to these existing systems, but it would significantly cut down on the incoming from the field, from the farm, which would allow that system to last much, much longer with this much lower use by bypassing everything coming out of that field around the Denler neighborhood and dumping it into four mile. Uh, I know that Logan's been working on some cost analysis for me, uh, and that's it, something I wanted to bring up to the council and see, you know, gather what some thoughts are on that, uh, and some check possibilities on this and whatnot, hopefully, I know, uh, one of the problems that we've got existing right now is in the exploration of, hey, where's all this water coming from, we found out, I believe with the dig, explorations in your yard, that there is something busted or actively flowing underneath one of our road beds right now, eroding it, which is gonna cost us a bunch of money at some point, probably sooner rather than later. What the fix is to that, I'm not an engineer, I don't, that's not what I do for a living, it's not my wheelhouse, but I see the struggles that my neighbors are having, and hey, what if we, and that's kind of where we're at.
My lateral field is flooded, and I watered, I, the concrete, two inches, it heaved up last year this winter, and, uh, I made a phone call to, uh, to Brian Eily, the farmer, and, and he had, uh, his tile guy, uh, came out and took a look at it this afternoon. He hasn't gotten back to me, and I couldn't get back there to talk to him, uh, but he made the statement to me that he was going to fix the problem. I don't know what the problem's gonna be and how big a scope it is, but, but, uh, and I think what he does is negotiate with Neil Hall or the owner of the property, but Brian's kind of guy, he'll, he gets into a, oh, oh, get it done, but, uh, you know, I mean, remember.
Has that always been wet back there?
Never, it's dry, I've been there, I've been there twenty-some years, and it's dry, and I'm like, where is this water coming from?
I remember before the Rachel, before, before that big storm that we had, it's all about water, which is in.
Twenty eighteen. Heavy rain, yeah, it's gonna sit there, but it's gone for the day, yeah, but, and that's why, I don't know where it's going.
And I don't know why it's staying, actually, it's just, what's, what's happened?
Yeah, it is.
Some tiles, some K D N or something, I might need one.
Here is a concern that I have, so, the farmer is going to fix everything that is in his field, and that's his responsibility. However, his field drains and outlets through the town, so we have multiple, multiple areas where it outlets through the town, one of them uh, runs down, you know, on the east end, we just had to make repair on that one, the resident had, they were up here at one of these meetings, and they had standing water in their yard, we just had to make repair on that one, and that outlets into, um, stormwater intake on Denler, and then it runs to the park, however.
But outlets overland, right?
No, underground, it's, it's underground tile.
Unless we hook every single one of those tiles into this ten inch pipe, there's always gonna be water that's gonna go down through there unless we cut all those off.
That's what I'm saying, so regardless of if the farmer fixes it in the field, we, so the water is not gonna pool in front of the break, the water's gonna pool behind the break. If we have water in our, in our road bed and coming up in people's yard, that means more than likely is not, there is a break in that tile that is under the rope. We're still gonna have that issue, and if it outlets down the county, I know there's some, some outlets that are, are collapsing down there, other things, so I'm working with conservation to try and work that angle, but we might have.
Is there a place you could maybe inject some dye or something, and then see if it.
No.
You see it down there, or, uh, go through the pipes?
If he can open up, if he can open our, if he can open, uh, you know, on his side, I mean, otherwise we're going through a six foot burn, or we're tearing up road to get to it.
I don't know, but there is, I find it very hard to believe, I, I'm just sure to say there's no chance that a ten inch pipe is gonna handle all the water that comes off of that field. I mean, no chance. Well, that's why, that's why it's designed like that, is so we have that, we have that big watering, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but I'm not saying it wouldn't fix my, the problems on Denler Drive there, uh, but I, 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 I don't think.
The only thing that would, would fix it is, is to dig a ditch.
No, it's a slow discharge.
Here's what, here's what, dig a ditch.
The tiling in fields is, that's a slow discharge, it, it's not the flood, the four inch rain to disperse all, that's not what that pipe is gonna do, so that ten inch pipe is two and, is one and a half times bigger than field tile, so.
Right.
Yeah, but now you got ten field piles.
I had to take that for a screw in my house.
If, if you cut it going south, exactly, but, but you need to determine how many's going into it, to increase it as it goes down.
I, I get that, I, I get that. And what we're dealing with here has got to be some sort of underground spraying or something, because that's not very, the amount of water coming out of it.
Well, it's just tile out of the field, but, but you, you know, you could just dig a ditch, and cut the tiles, let the tiles go in the ditch, and then go east or west.
Go east or west.
Cheap and effective.
It's all gravity and, and flow, you know, that's where it's gonna go, you can't make it go uphill.
Regardless of that fact, we still have a tile that goes underneath the road, and I have yet to find the outlet, I, I have an idea, but I have yet to confirm it, but if I'm correct, it runs underneath the Denler stub, underneath one hundred and thirty-fourth, and then continues down Denler and goes down into the county's park. Here's the issue, if there's any failure in the future on that, what are we looking at when we've already, when we've decided, hey, we're gonna replace this water road, and we're gonna replace this road, and now we have a failure, and we, we, we did not take care of it upstream to divert that in a different way, so that we're not eating the cost on the back of that. That is, that is where I'm at, I think.
They need to explore the elevations of it, see if they can run a system from behind your house to across the street of Denler, whatever, or to get it in four mile crests that go across that, or Denler all the way, just go across one hundred and thirty-fourth. But they need to find out what the elevations are, that's the key thing.
Wouldn't it be the easiest to get it down into that big concrete?
That's exactly what I'm thinking, go the other way, go back to that concrete, if the elevation's right.
I think that's the anticipation with what Scott was saying as well, and then we could, we could seal, we would need to seal and abandon, but that has to be the.
I, I, there's a, they put like four foot head wall on your, your, uh, between Larry and. Because that's what tore out of there when the train, head wall on the, on the north side of it, and I was wondering if that might have, you know, put a four foot down so water didn't get underneath it, because that's what happened to it the first time.
That's why they did that, so.
Yeah, and they tried to put that four foot head wall, and I said, whoa, I hope they're, how do you get high, oh, that drains, that's where all the water.
Well, according to Neil Hall, there's no tile that runs parallel with the backs of the aisles, I asked him tonight.
There's no tile east west.
What he says.
They, me and Rick asked him that too, when.
That's what we're talking, that's what Scott is, he's got some.
Well, they, you know, they've always had troubles with wetness of, of the fields all along here, you know, it'd be, it'd be good for them to tile it out.
He's re-tiled that since we've been there, at least the, the waterway, he's re-tiled it since, since it's there.
Well, you wanna just maybe wait and see what, uh, what, what the, uh, the tiling guy come out, it's a Skiley.
Usually it's advice, but, so what I, what I did notice, what I did notice today, I was out there, this isn't all good, it's, it's, here's what I noticed, I noticed more of it coming up through the road than not in my yard, you know, so.
I think that's because of how I.
It's coming up through the, the.
It's coming up through the cracks.
I think that's because of how I.
I think, I think the water flowing up through the.
That, that's pressure, something like that, that's blocking and, and, and then hydraulics pressing right up through, just like in a basement on a very, very wet year.
It's never.
We have a very small.
Before we start getting.
It's clogged on the south side or failed, K D N or rooted.
And it's probably doing that now because I disturbed it when we did the exploratory dig.
It's not.
I'm assuming that that's why.
It used to be, at the beginning, this, I, this, I'm not complaining about, I want everybody, I'm not complaining about this, last, last summer and fall, there was probably a strip along the side of my yard where ten or fifteen foot of it was wet all, the whole time, and that's where it's coming from. Now, this year, it seems like more of it is coming up out of the cracks in the road, and not as much out.
I'm gonna tell you, it's coming in my yard, my whole backyard is flooded.
Yep, and kind of what I was hoping was this affects, there's a lot of moving parts here, there's a lot of people.
Yeah, there is.
From the victims, you've got Oscon that is affected by this, you've got, uh, D O T, that, uh, the county D O T is affected by this, you've got all the roads that are being affected by this, and, and the farmer obviously has a problem, and it's gonna involve everybody, and I would, I didn't, I didn't know if that, what that looked like, that every, all of those entities in this room coming up with a solution.
I would be on board with that, and here's why, the ups that come stopped by my house today, because my wife is outside, and asked her about water problems, and, and they're, they're feeling, this is just third, third party message here, they're feeling like they're getting blamed for all of it, you know, I, I don't know that they are, and maybe, maybe they're, they have just as much issues because their water running and all their, their stuff because of this, you know?
It's, so, I, I know they, yeah.
Does somebody have to do, do you have to like, uh, study of some kind, where water?
Absolutely, right.
Like, do we have to, we have to, B and K, would B and K do that, like a study? Because I think before you even have.
Yeah, would be the same thing we did with us.
Before you even have a solution or bring people to the table, I think we need to figure out.
Identify the problem.
Identify the problem by, I would assume a study, but, I don't know.
You don't have a lot of time for that, there's nothing, there's nothing to study though, right, because nobody knows where your stuff is.
Well, documentation that needs to be done, uh, existing tiles.
What's up, Sherry?
And, and stuff like that.
I have a neighbor who claims that the water is flowing up here even, could it be coming into town up here and through his backyard and then down the alley?
Could it be coming into town up here and through his backyard and then down the alley? This guy talks all the time about. This must have been bigger than what you were thinking about, right? This guy has it flowing underneath his yard. He runs two sub pumps twenty-four hours a day.
So do I.
Been there seventeen years and it's never been worse.
Running, so I think it's bigger than just that.
And you're just the one, look, lay it.
Though underneath.
Right under my house.
There there are aquifers. Areas where our houses were built.
Because it was built seven years ago. And nobody knew about this river that was twenty feet.
And I said it's never been.
But how deep was it?
I haven't, I don't really know.
Yeah, that's only if I can, behind, if I could get to. Now it's.
You couldn't find anything.
We thought, okay, well, maybe we could go to the farmer's field. We're not gonna do that, so I reassessed the situation.
Okay, uh, let's try to wrap this, this one up. What is the feeling? Should we maybe visit with uh or let? Let uh uh the farmer uh work, I think he'll be in that field this week. And let him work his magic, you know, we'll talk to him. And also we'll, we'll talk to B S and Tim. I think it's, I think he'll get it done. I've, I've, I've been conversing with Brian. He wants to get into the field. I mean, that's, that's his.
Pretty sure it's fine. The amount of water that's coming out. Pretty sure it's fine. If if you guys have not driven over there, go drive over near Scott's house. At the water coming out from underneath the road. That is going to destroy that road soon.
How do you guys feel about tearing up the concrete, just dig a hole out and fight it?
Why can we not go beyond the burn?
Of the north side of the burn.
I I understand that, you would have to get an agreement with the farmer to do that. If you got a good hoe operator from the back, from the, from the end of the concrete to the power line, you got about two feet to dig right there.
Yeah, well, the, the markers, the, the flags and stuff, they're eighteen inches either side.
I don't think.
That you have a hand date.
I don't think we should tear the concrete up. I think we should go beyond, ask for permission. So go ahead.
What I anticipated, the reason I called that off in the first place was because we were not prepared with locates and we were not prepared to tear up a road. So I called it, I I called that off while we're still just barely into a couple hundred dollars instead of a few thousand. The next step is, one, we gotta get permission from the farmer, see if we can, we can do a dig there. We follow the same principle as we were going to originally do and we have them come and we televise it, we get video of actually what's going on. Underneath that road and we determine if the problem is downstream of the road or upstream in the field. And before we go, even go to do that, we have the plan in place to cut and repair tile and road. At the same time, we're not gonna go in half car. And that is just gonna be a minute for me to put together.
So I think the only reason we have to tear up the road is, is one, if it's on a four inch tile, you can only televise it for a hundred and.
Twenty-five?
Hundred and twenty-five.
With a, with a push cam.
Barely gets you to a hundred and thirty-four.
Right. So. I think, and again, just, just based on where the roadbed was saturated and where it was, where it's leaking. Through the cracks and everything else. I think that if there is going to be something, it's either going to be. It's gonna be within that confines of that stuff. I think it's gonna be within the confines of that stuff. And I, I think that's where we need to just look for the issue. But at the same time, the farmer's.
Are you getting impatient?
No, I'm not. I, I, this one bug, I don't, I just don't.
You've not, you've not experienced this before.
I came home and my, my slabs were up two inches and and then it started melting. I'm gonna get flooded backyard. I've never had that before.
And and it's not a, a what year per se?
Not really.
And and it hasn't been for two or four years. It's been relatively dry. We got not, not a super.
So I've gotta call in this.
We don't have thirty inches extra rain every year.
Cause I don't wanna go in, if we do have to do something, I don't wanna go into it and then we're stopping the project again to go back to it.
Yeah, that's uh. We'll, we'll put our heads together here and and have more information for you at the next meeting. But if we've come up with some uh information before then, we'll shoot it out to you by. Either facts or, you know, facts. Not facts, I'm sorry.
Email.
Email, uh, your little phones, whatever. We'll, we'll get the information out. Okay, um, this, the next item is number five, the shipping containers. Um, I think that only, uh, yeah.
One sixty-one point oh seven is the one that I most. Your input on. Do they have one already? Do you want it renewed? And Mr. Strong will probably have input, that's why he's here hopefully.
This is painted up, but it's down on a private property, so commercials are right.
I go through a lot of small towns, Spencer, Iowa, drive down the main street that runs through there, you'll count, I counted six or eight and I'm driving by myself. And they have them, they're no worse than a dumpster, they're no worse than a power plant, substation. If they're kept up nice and look nice, I I happen to do some doorwork and for the uh. Energy company out there and he knew a little about it and it was uh kind of a service that they gave to their. Uh businesses, cause they're stagnant communities. And instead of having to spend a hundred thousand dollars and upgrade to all the new uh regulations that buildings have come to today. Just, they give that service to their businesses so they don't need tile. And that's the explanation I got.
So is it mostly businesses buried or is it residential?
I, I, there's small business people. I, I didn't see any residential, but I drove down the main street to my power plant, so, and he didn't uh. Have any input on that, but they're, they're out there in small communities. So.
This particular one is not anywhere near a residential, it's more of a commercial space area.
Yep, so it just input for y'all to.
Hunter, what, what, what do you think?
Well, I actually uh think that uh one sixty-one oh two, having them on residential property is. It prohibited is probably the right thing to do. Commercial property, however, I disagree with prohibiting them uh whole, you know, across the board. Because honestly, I think that's a pretty good use of those. Uh reuse, recycle, if you would. Would I like to see them sited and and kind of hidden?
Yeah, or painted.
Or painted, exactly, make it fit the property.
And in the building.
Be sitting plumb in the square. Yeah, exactly. Uh so to to prohibit them, you know, paint with that broad brush, I disagree with that. Uh but I would like to see some caveats on it. So the commercial and industrial property could share the same status. When it comes to those in my mind. And that's, that's the, you know, thing that I, that would be.
Can we reserve the right to revisit it down the road? It's all of a sudden, you have a couple hundred of those same in town?
So if we make it, so if we make it the same as that, that's why we require a permit, so.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that. Remedy like that now? So right, what do you think, Rob and Scott?
I don't know if it'll have an issue one way or the other. Amanda?
I like the commercial and industrial thing. I would say for this one six one oh seven, well, that would be, okay, yeah, I, I agree with Andres.
Uh, is there a permitting process for them?
There's maybe, there's not currently.
So we, we need to maybe insert a permit, that you need to get a permit from the city.
That way you know what's going on.
Yeah. I mean, you know, we, we wind up with the chicken shed or or. We'll do that. Scott's okay with everybody?
Yep. A one, a one time permit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, one time permit, so that we can take a look at it.
I'll work it to rewrite this in the grant where we're gonna put it in the code before we even have a copy here, not you guys to see.
And with the, the context that it has to be painted, it can't be.
It'll look nice.
You're right with everything in the good repair then?
Yep.
The sixteen point sixteen.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the uh Ankeny fire rate.
There you go.
I uh, I had a request for a meeting from the uh acting city manager of Ankeny. Uh they're in the process of, of trying to locate a new city manager, but uh their council has, is uh. Um, asked them to um start looking at where some of the revenue was being lost. Uh or they're not billing uh equally to what their citizens are paying. And our rate, which was odd to me for the last few years, has just been the same.
Since two thousand twenty ten.
Yeah, it's just been uh the same and now all of a sudden. Um they are requesting like over a three year period that they phase in um the uh. And bring it up to the twenty eighty agreement, up to uh what the citizens of Ankeny are paying. Now, coming with that, uh I don't know where. We would get in trouble with the state of Iowa with the way uh, and you'll probably have to research this. But I know they, they look at all of the assessed value of all the property within all in the proper. And then there's a formula and that's what they charge uh for fire protection. And you know, if, I don't wanna get crossways with the auditor, you know, if we're, if he says, hey, no, you can't. Go against the law, but here we are, you know, this is doubled, I mean, this virtually doubled. Uh what we've been paying.
I, I think when they came in, beans, we didn't get a discount on our insurances because we were. The fire station wa- wasn't in the, what is it, a five mile or seven mile?
Insurance institute sets zones.
Yeah.
And locations of fire, how close you are to the fire.
Yes, and we didn't fall into any of that and for some reason, I think that fell in to what they originally started out with. But now I don't know where the fire stations are and they might have a link to stand on because now we can fall into that. And if we do, we need to let our citizens know. Cause now they can tell their insurance companies that they fall in that. Fire zone that they.
They're taking ten minutes plus to get here on any call, on average? That is my question. I said, where is the average time?
Well, I've always said they're dead.
Yeah, four minutes they're dead.
That's the way it's always been.
And they're in, in station. Like, that's insane.
Now they're, it, it's just, I'm guilty with that. Well, you have, you have the east side one and they built the west side one, they are a lot closer than they ever have been before.
A mile closer, maybe.
You know, but, but I mean, they can get here faster, but still, it's a lot to get here. And I, we've always lived under the assumption that, you know, we're to.
As soon as they built the new ones that were on the northern side, it was Otter Creek, the one. My house falls into that, so would yours. I don't know if it helps up town maybe. But uh these states, I'm ninety percent confident when they build the new fire stations that that, now we're, now we're within that range.
And I think we tried to have L Card or Oak City and give our money to a small community, but they wouldn't let us. We had to go with.
The zone.
Yeah, cause we had to go with Ankeny.
It costs us more money in insurance. Their insurance bill, they can't get to you. Um, you know, it, this is something really, it's kind of almost non-negotiable. And if they wanna give us a three year work together on the situation, I, I don't see a.
I have not the same issue with their going with L Card, because they're not just going to worry us out.
They've had. I, I also caution the council, you know, we're looking at two percent growth in our, uh, is all we can. You know, have in our budget and you know, you're, you're adding, you know. A lot more money per year on this flying item on the budget, so just be cognizant of that. But um, you know, we'll have.
Not the current, not the one we just, yeah.
No, it, it'll be the next, you know, it, this is a ways down.
Yeah.
But just be cognizant of that, you know, that uh, I know we wanna keep our, our taxes as low as possible, but you know. Nobody else, you know, works, does that, you know, and we just have to be careful with it.
Oh, you gotta keep our citizens protected.
Yeah, we do, we can, and that's our real only option. It, it is no other, our kind of over.
Well, and that's why we put the twelve, the ten and the eight inch water lines in to. When you had a four inch line and they sucked it dry and. In a hot minute, it's a fire down in all in the states, it was in our mindset for fire. It's not fire protection, it's, you're, you're prepared. Is, you can't call protection because it's, it's, you have waters in your eyes.
Uh, do they charge us per, per call on top of this?
No.
No, not on fire, but the ambulance that you.
No, not us, they might kill the person.
The person, that's what I think.
The city doesn't incur.
Never have, but.
Isn't insurance covered that, that's the cover of costs on your insurance?
I don't know. I'm just answering the question about whether the city receives a bill, if the fire truck or the ambulance comes up here, no.
And and if you reserve, uh, refuse to write in the ambulance, they just go home and, and it's, it's a done deal.
Yeah.
But if you get in, then you pay.
Sure.
Your church, that's when that falls in.
Right.
What do they call it? White, white, there's a couple thousand dollar bill.
Have, have we noticed any, was there any documented situations where slow response time has caused excessive property loss or life?
Well, there's, there hasn't been a fire since the one. And there's been some emergencies here, but I think it's all been uh.
I don't know.
Mostly. Not life threatening.
So the, the reason I ask that is would there be any merit, any uh. Proceed or any actual rain if we were to try to maintain a small volunteer fire force? Kind of a merge first response?
There you, this, usually it's a businesses in town that support that and your, your city employees. And we have two city employees and no business. So we, I don't think we have the manpower. And then anybody's gonna be staying home would probably not fall into, uh, there's a lot of classes you gotta go to and yeah, uh, we're better off.
That wouldn't, wouldn't work.
I, I, I didn't mean to replace, I meant to stop.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Uh, I, I got, I took CPR classes over in L Card and I got a little bit behind me, I'm just. But I go to a lot of places where there's, holy cow.
Okay, uh, and so did that, um, I hear that from the council that that will be.
No, there's no vote.
No vote, but the, the council, city council knows that this is gonna be coming out or something.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is uh Mr. Logan Carpenter. Speak fast. Yeah, at loud.
Uh, yeah. Uh, yeah.
Why don't you come up here and sit down? Stand up, portico.
Well, I'm, I'm all right. So, I need you to stand up anyway.
A little closer so you can be on the panel.
Oh boy.
Yes.
See the back of my head. So, a hundred and thirty-four, the asphalt, you guys asked me to get some estimates on that. You used to be other than Eric. He split this, he split this bit in two, um, mainly because your east end is not going to require.
Say, Bob.
The east end's not going to require anything more than your two-inch overlay. With the west end, with the damages in there, you're probably going to end up having some four-inch patching. But he just just split it down the middle and just go on those.
Did you say patching and then overlay?
Yeah, yeah, only in the worst, uh, the worst areas, most affected areas, keep that, that alligator cracking from reoccurring.
So when it's four inches, is it four inches of level that's already there or it would have to get to ground down?
Actually, four inches is more than we have there.
Unless my question though is it's four inches on top of what we already have.
No.
It's fair enough.
Yeah, so they would mill two inches off of the entire road. They would replace that with two inches of brand new. And in the sections that are in worse deteriorated condition, a lot of alligator cracking and so on, then they would go down four inches, which we only have three and a quarter there. So there would be essentially more there than.
So they mill off or they only mill the thickness of what they're going to back out.
That is correct.
So wouldn't that be extra ledges at people's yards, people's driveways, anything like that?
No, and they would, they would, everything would be seen in. It would be, to be honest with you, there's probably a couple of places where, where people's driveways are going to be better than, than they were. It's not going to be, okay, you've got asphalt up here and now here's your driveway. That's not something there, there, there ever did here. So, but I know that this was a question that you guys had. This would take place, you know, and at the same time, it's a, it's a discounted rate. Especially for the entire road, it's a, it's a discounted rate because they're already going to be.
Well, that west end is the worst end because it's like a roller coaster. You're doing, you're doing disc driving down from, but the four-mile creek, that bridge that embats your place down to the stop sign.
How long, how long would that maybe?
So.
Oh, it'd last quite a while, quite a while.
You know what? That's been thirty years.
Well longer.
Yeah, thirty years.
Yeah, it'd be well longer than that. I would say if we, uh, if we made a concerted effort to, you know, purchase the appropriate equipment and maintain all these new roads that we're going to get appropriately, ten years, that's like, we ain't, that's a lot.
Ten years for a lot.
And before we have, before we have maybe some issues.
You have to.
Yes, east and west.
Yeah, east, east and west.
They got the same, they got the same bid price on them, but it's because he split.
They were the same numbers. I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, east and west.
Yeah.
All right. So.
So, I mean, it's, in my opinion, this is a pretty good.
Same paper, east and west.
Fifty.
Fifty-seven, fifty-seven and it should come to a hundred and fourteen or thirty or something.
Yeah, and they did the same thing for us, uh, when they were in the school parking lot and we went to Forest Street now. Uh, that's down at Forest Street. They did the same thing.
Might only concern a lot of the bitches that are on there and people that are knowing that it's, people still need to be able to out their mower up out of the ditch to do whatever it does.
I have a few people that I, that I know have come to me with, with issues with, I, I think honestly, if their, their concrete driveway has, has settled.
Yeah.
Um, culverts have collapsed, so on and so forth. So there's a couple of places that I, I will specifically oversee and say, hey, let's readdress this in a, in a different manner so that they're a lot happier.
If, if, uh, we have different council people here, but if, if a resident, what's the council's feeling? A resident would like to purchase a pipe, two northern pipes, a pipe and at their expense and put dirt in and just at the level, level you are. I know a previous council said no. Uh, I was the last one and I, you know, I did, did mine.
You got to.
Are you tired of the expensive homeowner if they wanted to do it themselves?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's some of them that, that, you know, they would, they would do that.
I mean, if they're working within the right way, they need a, a building permit.
We got eighteen inches of fill to put a culvert in.
The fees, I suppose, if they're doing it in the right way at their cost, but, you know.
If they're willing to pay the fees, pay for the materials and pay for the labor and provide us with engineering specs that show that it's going to be done right and the contractor's licensed, what do we care?
I was going to say, if they do it properly, why?
I, I just.
They said no.
I haven't had anybody.
Well, it's because it never got done properly. His buddy brought the pipe in, they threw it in the ground and went like this. But that's good. And now you've got all this running down there. So what he said is exactly what needs to happen. You gotta get a licensed guy to come in and, and shoot it and subgrade it and pipe it and.
Something, something to be said about that ditch though, that goes along there. But it, that is still catching some of the water that's coming from that.
Yeah, yeah.
And all of a sudden, if you fill all that stuff in, you know, that, that ditch is there for a reason to pull, pull some water.
I think, personal opinion, um, I, I don't know any city that is, is going to allow a resident to put in infrastructure in the right way that would be the city's either responsibility or, um, without, without having, because you're going to engineer this house and this house in between there. And sure, the water's going to flow perfectly fine because it's been engineered there. But you're probably not seeing the big picture from everything else.
Well, and hopefully this is, this hundred and fourteen thousand to get it paid, to get us by because, and save his time and all the patch and never getting it in a decent shape. This will last five, six years and then that road can be done. And.
That ditch has a pros.
Yes.
Yeah. And if you can deal with those, the driveways and everything at once and you can take all that wave out of it, everything will drain properly, uh, you can deal with all that in one shot in the five or seven years to get that.
You'll see a big difference when it's still clogged, right?
Just be going faster.
Yeah, so, yeah. I'm going to see how far. One, one thing, do you guys have anything that you want to share with us?
You sat here for a long time.
Sat here for a long time listening to us.
Well, I liked the idea of picking up the sand and salt and crap. That's a cool idea.
Thanks, man.
I brought up the idea about picking up leaves.
Yes.
Because my hometown used to do it. But you've still got to get people up the bus to rake the leaves, which it doesn't happen. People don't go to hangars anymore.
But what, what's everybody feel about this? Because we need that, because in three months, May, June, July, they're coming in August to do it.
They're coming in July, July.
To tear up, but to pay.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Paying money. July first is our.
And, and they'll need to know in.
Well, they do block schedule, so they'll definitely.
Well, they'll need to know here ASAP, so.
Y'all agree, Scott?
We can't vote on it tonight, though.
No, no, we can.
You're okay. I'm fine with it. Okay, you good? Amanda, you okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, Mark's good.
Because that road's horrible. It's, and you've been patching it and it's been patched from Rick for.
We spent a lot.
It's fashionable. It, it's done.
I can give you guys a number if I have a computer in front of me, but you probably don't want to see the numbers.
No, Amanda, no. So, uh, this, this'll.
Yeah, uh, I'll rush over the rest of it. DOT equipment or DOT, uh, project, uh, it's gonna look a little wonky for a little bit because the ground's a little saturated. We'll finish up the grading and everything and rock, uh, while down the road. Uh, I don't have any updates on the storm mark. That's been a project that we're doing up here, but I'll let you guys know when we schedule the pre-construction meeting. And let's see, uh, yearly tile, same thing I do every year, we're doing the same. Metapoint is being done by the county. They have, we have a maintenance contract. They're under maintenance contracts until November. So they are responsible for repairs on that until November and then we're responsible following.
What were you saying?
Uh, there's cracking, there's crack, there's panel cracking. Um, it's very minute, but they, they're, they're doing it for yourself. That's super. Can't, can't complain. Everything's, everything's ready for the water tower. We didn't have any issues with any of that. Yep, everything else is just, uh, general stuff. Public notice board was installed. We got the school dirt moved up here for a project. But.
The, the board will be more.
Yeah.
It wasn't what I was expecting this evening.
Yeah.
I was expecting, so the latest for this meeting was taped to the outside.
Because Logan has the key. He was already gone for the day.
Oh, oh, hey.
I love that he has the key.
He's straight up.
Oh, and I need the key, but it's not the fine. Tape up fine.
Is there not two keys?
There, there, there is one, there is one in here, but it's, there's, there's a lot of keys in here.
Tape up didn't it work?
It just cracked.
Yeah, when I voted on, I was expecting something.
But you're saying. We, we, we thought about that on the, the back end. It looks a lot larger when, uh, we got online and saw that.
It looked, yeah, it was much bigger. It is a nice looking.
It is.
It's just, it was just smaller.
I think, uh, if we decide to go ahead in the future and do any more, we'll probably just replace that one and, and put up other ones that are double posted. We're going to have to do something because there were notices on top of notices and if it's behind a lot of glass, you can't see what's underneath. Great, so.
That's why it was taped to the outside.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, it's not really serving its purpose.
Right.
If the notices are covered up.
Yeah. You're wrong.
Nope, it's, they won't normally be covered up. It's just that, that Easter bunny thing is just absolutely ginormous and took up ninety percent of the space in there. So that is, uh, all I got. We already talked about, uh, the tile on a hundred and thirty-fourth and down there. So we know what's, uh, going on and I will let you guys know when we need to adjust budget on that. Because we will, just to be on the safe side, so we can get everything done at once. So that's all I got.
I motion to adjourn.
So, Sherry asked to notify inroads or Logan does?
That's Logan.
Logan, you'll notify them immediately?
I don't.